All right, here we go. Good morning. I'd call the order, the recess meeting of August the 13th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Beck?
Will not be with us today.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Will not be with us today.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Hilton?
He is here and stepped to the back.
Dr. Highlander?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Here. Immediation and pledge will be conducted by Commissioner Mackey, so follow please rise.
Thank you, Chairman. Today, Chairman, members of the Commission, our former Commissioner Mitch McClure, he's going to bring the prayer and will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a delight to be here with you. I want us to be sure today to remember our emergency service workers, our utility workers, and all the people that are out that give their, almost their lives every day when we have situations like we had last night. And this prayer for these families that have been affected as well. Let's pray. Lord, you're good to us, and I'm thankful for that. We've had crisis in this county in the last few hours, and there's been a lot of involvement of people literally almost giving their lives to try to save others. And I just pray for them. I pray you'd protect them and guide them. Thank you for a county that sees the wisdom and supporting and having good, strong emergency services and all that we have. Thank you for that. And I pray for these leaders. They are leaders. They were chosen to be in these spots, and they were chosen to serve. And I ask you, give them wisdom. There are some days that they may need your wisdom more than others, but you're giving it to them without making them halty or proud, your scripture says. And I just pray, help them. And Lord, you've been good to us here in Hamilton County. You have blessed us, and I pray continued blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Address the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you, Commissioner Mackey. Thank you for being here. Reverend McClure. Mr. Clerk, I'm showing one item on the recess agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. 825-32, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you read it into the record?
Resolution 825-32, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to submit an application for the U.S. Department of Justice Homeland Security 2025 Port Security Grant.
Mr. Graham made the motion. Mr. Shipley seconds a motion. Sheriff, anything you want to, your chief, want to say about this item? Okay. All right. So no lights, no one standing for comment. We'll do a roll call. Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey? Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Eversol?
Yes. So Resolution 825-32 passes. See no other items? We will now adjourn the recess meeting and go into agenda session. So Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Here.
Mr. Beck, Commissioner Chauncey, absent. Mr. Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander? Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Chairman?
Here. We're showing one presentation on the agenda today, special presentation. So Mr. Johnson, turn the floor a few. We have 10 minutes. We'll put 10 minutes on the clock.
Good morning. Greg Lewis, 5555 Hunter Road. Wanted to talk a few minutes about some concerns we have with the resolution that's coming forward today. Next slide, please. Am I doing that? So, I'm sorry. Oh, perfect. The Reagan Smith report that was presented to this body on 3/6 of 24 indicated that 92% of the people on the Plant Hamilton survey wanted to prioritize the preservation of farmland and rural character. This was consistent across all areas of the county. Area 8 was 88%. Areas 7 and 12 were 93. Areas 9 and 13 were 94%. And if you think about that, 92% on average. When's the last time you got 92% of people to agree on anything? You can't even get 92% of the people to agree ice cream tastes good. And the other point I wanted to make on this slide is when we had our communities out in our district, we always had big crowds. People were really concerned. I know I've heard some of you other commissioners mention the same type of crowds at your meetings. We had one that we had over 300 people at, and one of ours that we held at Udoa High School gym, they filled up all the chairs, had people sitting in the bleachers. It was a big crowd, and people were there mainly to express their concerns about it. Second thing I want to talk about, we've been doing some benchmarking. We've shared some of this information with you before about what our peers are doing. And I focused on the four counties that are closest to Hamilton County in population size. I mean, we're talking about housing here, so makes sense to use population as an independent variable when you're looking at that kind of thing. And in talking with them, all of them are taking steps to slow in growth. They're placing restrictions on rezoning or simply no longer allowing rezonings at all. Some of them have some programs that they are creating to channel growth back into the cities where the infrastructure already exists. I can expand on those if you want me to, whenever. Some of these counties have increased lot sizes and lower density to try to slow growth. They all encourage the use of conservation subdivisions. That's a topic that our team spent several weeks looking at until word came back that the builders weren't interested in building conservation subdivisions here. It's a concept that all the other counties are using, so I would like to see us look at that a little harder. A few other things that we found out is these counties rarely change their plans. Once they set their plans, they follow their plans. They do have, one county was telling me if they had a big, you know, like for example, and if Audi was coming into their county, so that's a big, huge economic development thing, then that might warrant taking a look before the five-year time on their plan. But, you know, changing monthly or every other month, nobody else is doing that. And my last bullet there is these counties talk about how they cannot afford the infrastructure costs associated with growth. Even one of the counties that's authorized to use the impact fee said they couldn't keep up with that. These next two slides are identical. I originally created this slide using square foot. This is minimum lot sizes in all these peer counties, and it was suggested we look at it in terms of acres. So the two slides are identical. It's just one's in square feet, one's in acres. I'll talk to this acre one since it's up first. As you can see from this chart, we allow significantly smaller minimum lot sizes than our peer counties do in their A1 equivalent zoning. Before I did this, I had no idea that we looked so much different than what everybody else is doing. Okay, on this chart, let's dive into it for just a minute. So those two bars that you see are hatched, those are the ones that assume sewer is available. I did Hamilton County. Everything red's Hamilton County. Everything blue is peer counties. If you look at that, if you look at that first one, that one six acre lot, that's the 7,500 square foot minimum size lots we allow if we have sewer available. For Knox County's version of A1, the minimum lot size is one acre, but if certain criteria are met, they will consider half-acre lots. And so I just assumed for this chart that they were all half-acre. So it just depends if they've got criteria on sewer, they've got criteria on roads, that type of thing, before they'll allow the half-acre size. And again, both of those are only if sewer's there. And, you know, you can see that their minimum lot size is almost three times the size of our minimum lot size. All the solid bars are for septic. Our minimum lot size is slightly larger than a half acre. Sir? Yes, sir?
Five minutes.
Oh, thank you. So ours is slightly larger than a half acre. The minimum lot size for every other county varies from about twice ours to almost 10 times as large as ours. And don't forget, all these counties we're talking about here, their populations are growing faster than our populations are growing.
Okay, I'm going to wrap this up. I'm Don Johnson. I am, I live in 7708 Diamond Head Drive in Udoa. And I want to start with the... Can Hamilton County afford the impacts of this resolution? Revenue, according to the county's cost of community service, doesn't cover all of the costs. And the report stated that the costs do not include long-term capital needs, deferred maintenance, other future financial impacts, and related growth and development in the county. We've heard that taxes pays for all the infrastructure, and the report basically says it does on the short term, but long term it does not. Tennessee Commission shows, right now, we have 3.2 billion, 3.29 billion infrastructure backlog. Reagan Smith stated that we have 65 million to 132 million in transportation. Long-term estimates will increase if we continue to have the rapid growth. Does Hamilton County really need it? Let's talk about homes. There are thousands of homes currently approved but not yet built in Hamilton County. Local home builders have said they typically build around 1,000 to 1,200 homes based on the market drivers. Approximately 5,000 approved but not built homes currently in our area, District 9 and District 10. They have homes that they can build now without ever asking for another rezoning. At the current pace, it will take several years for them to build the homes that they have approval for. Let's talk about housing inventory. We've heard in recent commission meetings that, in fact, in May of 2025, there's only 439 available houses for sale. That was from a report put out by the realtors. We asked for clarification on that because when we look at the same data from the same source, we find there's 2,238 houses currently available for sale. So, and that's increasing each month. So I guess there was a message sent that there was a housing emergency, and we're concerned that we don't really see that emergency. We also heard...
You have two minutes, Mr. Johnson.
We also heard that there was, that there were 46,000 homes needed by 2024, but that was for a metro six-county area. And that includes Hamilton, Marion, Sequatche, Catusa, Dade, and Walker. We took a look at that data and found that there's only 20,000, not 46,000, in the metro area that are needed when you take out, for the county, when you take out the city. There's 15,800 single-home, single-home family units that are needed in, again, in that six-county area. District 9 and 10, again, has about a third of that demand of 15,000 already available to be built. So in conclusion, I'd like to say that we don't feel that we need this resolution. It brings on too much growth for the county. Citizens have spoken out. As you heard from Greg, many of the faster-growing counties are taking a different approach. We suggest we really look at that. Can Hamilton County afford it? Obviously, no. And does Hamilton County really need it? We feel from our data that they really don't need the heavy growth. So based on the data, based on the information, based on the benchmarking, we are requesting that we do not, that you do not approve that, this resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Have a light on up here, so hang tight there, Mr. Johnson. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen. You've put a lot of work into this, and some people think that it's just five or six or eight, 10 people. There are hundreds that have come to our meetings. I've been to the meetings, and there are. One thing I would like to say is that every district has different needs. I look at, I taught at Red Bank High School several years, and there are needs that Commissioner Sharp has in his district. There are certain ones they have needed. Marston Springs Road can get backed up, and it truly can. But, I mean, when Marston Springs Road is backed up, there are 20 or 30 little streets that you can go around it on. I know on Signal Mountain, you've got three roads coming up and down Signal Mountain. And the same thing's true out on Highway 58. If there's a bad wreck on the south end of 58, and you have about two or three outlets that you can go, or you've got to go all the way to Cleveland to get to the interstate. I think we need to look at every district in the county differently. And I appreciate the job that the builders do. The infrastructure needs are great, and I appreciate the mayor who has put the unincorporated roads committee, and that's a good start. But we're, the estimates are anywhere from 75 to 150 million dollars in needs, and property taxes just won't do it. When I first came on the commission, I was told, "Infrastructure always follows the building," but I haven't seen it in the four years I've been here yet. I hope and pray it does. I want it to, but we need to look at every district differently, I think. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I'm going to reserve most of my comments for Commissioner Hilton's resolution, but I'd just like to thank Commissioner Eversol for changing this up from areas to districts. I think each district stands on its own, has its own needs. I've used the analogy quite often that when I ran children's hospital, we took care of premature children that were this big and children that were that big. And, sorry. And you had to have the right equipment for each one. Each area is different, is my point. Each area is different. Thank you for mentioning the three roads to Signal Mountain. One happens to be state highway, and the other two are revised wagon roads. So I just think each, as commissioners, when we talk to each other, we respect each other's districts. And I think that is the most important thing we should be thinking about as we go through these plans. Thank you.
Okay, see no more lights. I will, I will say this. I totally agree that as commissioners, we are elected for our district to represent those citizens within our districts. We have to, it's our voice to speak on their behalf and what their will is, because we represent them. And I think for me, in my opinion, is when you look at what Plant Hamilton is, it's not designed, in my opinion, to stop growth. It never has been designed to stop growth, because we have to grow. We have to build homes. We want people to move to Hamilton County. We want our kids to live here. We want our grandkids to live here. But we also have unique characteristics that we want to be able to maintain. And where we can build density, we need to build density. And if a commissioner wants density in their district, then the other 10 need to support that, because that's the will of that district, and it's the will of the people of that district. And if a district is getting overwhelmed and has infrastructure issues, then I think that the, I'm sorry. Okay, we can pause. I thought you were talking to me, I'm sorry. But no, I think that, I think that it should be the will of each commissioner to speak for their residents, those constituents that elected them. And I think that's the tough position, the tough job. So I appreciate, appreciate the dialogue. I do see a light just come on. So Commissioner Graham, do you have something to add?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize again for interrupting you. That was a nice presentation, and I appreciate that information. That was 10 minutes that was set up by you for that side of the issue. Does the other side get 10 minutes? Does the opposite side that's been discussing this? I mean, it's right, it's fair for everybody, and you're talking very nicely about the side that's here, but then there's another side to the story, and I believe they need 10 minutes to explain their issues as well. Thank you, Commissioner.
If, I'll answer your question, Commissioner Graham. If the other side wanted to be a part of a presentation, I'm always excited to have them a part of a presentation. We put them on the agenda Monday, and I don't have an issue. If no one objects, if the other side wants to come up and do a presentation for 10 minutes, I'll hold the floor for it. So if you've got a presentation, if you've got any slides or anything you'd like to present, absolutely.
Julian Bell, 3221 Harrison Pike, here for the home building industry and the housing industry for Hamilton County. Thank you for that, Commissioner Eversol. I'd request that we be allowed the 10 minutes next week so we can prepare a presentation. We don't have a 10-minute presentation prepared today.
Patricia, if you'll make sure, join, get your presentation to Patricia by Monday, as the other team did, and you'd be more than happy we'll get you added to the agenda next week. Absolutely. Those are the rules for presentations, so I think, I think we've got to respect that. So, okay. All right, so we'll move forward. We have minutes to be looking at to enter for next week for the recess meeting for July 30, 2025, the agenda session, July 30, 2025, and the regular meeting of August 6, 2025. We'll also be looking at entering five reports into the record next week. So with that, we'll move into resolutions. We'll begin with Resolutions 825-13. So Madam Clerk, if you'll read captions.
Resolution 825-13, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and oaths of notaries previously elected, and the oaths of deputy sheriffs.
Okay, see, no one at the mic, and no lights on, so we'll take this up next week. We'll move forward to 825-14.
Resolution 825-14, a resolution to appoint two members to the Hamilton County Employee Appeals Board for two-year terms, beginning August 20, 2025, and ending August 20, 2027. This will appoint Bruce O'Neill and Kenneth Simpson.
Okay, see no lights on for conversation, and someone's standing. Do you have a comment? Or is he just standing? Okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure, because anyone that has comments on these resolutions, we asked them to stand on that wall, so. I kept looking at you, just to go see if you was... Okay, so no one's standing for comment, so we'll take this up next week. 825-15.
Resolution 825-15, a resolution reappointing one Resolution eight-twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution reappointing one commissioner to the Hamilton County Agricultural Extension Committee for terms beginning August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and ending August twentieth, twenty twenty-seven. This will reappoint Commissioner David Sharp.
Okay. See no lights on for comment. No one's standing. We'll take this up next week. We'll go to eight-twenty-five dash sixteen.
Resolution eight-twenty-five dash sixteen, a resolution making an appropriation to Red Bank Elementary School in the amount of one thousand dollars from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District Two.
All right, Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Baker, for making this allocation. Although Red Bank Elementary School is not in District Six, it does serve a large population of District Six students. I appreciate that appropriation, or this resolution for appropriation. Chairman, would it be the right time now, or, or next week, to suggest adding another thousand dollars to that contribution?
This is Commissioner Baker's resolution, so if you wanted to update it for next week, Commissioner-
I think maybe another five would be good. Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be fine.
Well, I don't have that. But if we could add another thousand dollars from the District Six Travel Discretionary Fund, that, that would be great.
Yeah, amend the resolution.
Admon that resolution. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. See no more lights. No one's standing for comment. We'll take this up next week. We'll move to Resolution eight-twenty-five dash seventeen.
Resolution eight-twenty-five dash seventeen, a resolution making an appropriation to Saudi Daisy Food Bank in the amount of one thousand dollars from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District One.
Okay, see no lights on for conversation. No one's standing. We'll take this up next week. We'll move on to eight-twenty-five dash eighteen.
Resolution eight-twenty-five dash eighteen, a resolution advising the Regional Planning Commission and Regional Planning Agency. It is the will of the Hamilton County Commission to change Plan Hamilton in accordance with the specified changes.
Okay. Before we go to Commissioner Hilton, I want to, we're, we're going to modify the rules just slightly, because we have such a large audience for each of the topics for the community. Commissioner Hilton, if, if it's okay with you, we give each side fifteen minutes instead of the normal ten minutes to, to discuss their side. And we'll, we can begin with, you want to do the public comment first? Okay. All right, so we can do that. So, the public comment, we'll begin with those that are for this resolution. We'll begin with those four first, since we heard from the other group at first. Okay. So, hang on just a second, Mr. Bell. We do have a light. Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, you said we're going to change the rules somewhat. Instead of giving each side ten minutes, you want to give them fifteen. I wonder, could we give each side ten, and then five for each side to rebut the other? Just a question.
The amount of time's the same, so I don't see why not. I would, I would agree. Chair would support that.
Thank you.
Without objections, the chair would support that. So, ten, ten, five, five. Sounds like a, should say hike after that, so. Or Omaha, something like that. So, all right. We did read into the record. Make sure I'm not off base. We've got some. So, we'll begin with Mr. Bell.
People, Tennessee.
There you go.
I'm here on behalf of the housing industry of, of Hamilton County, specifically for the, the Home Builder Association and the Realtors. Home Builder Association represents several hundred businesses with thousands of employees. We provide housing to Hamilton County citizens, and we're aligned on our views on Plan Hamilton. We're here to urge you to modify Plan Hamilton, and here's why. We're here to urge you to modify Plan, probably promises to negatively impact Hamilton County. Am I not close enough? I'm sorry. It don't impact private property rights. This plan seriously impacts the, the rights of thousands of Hamilton County citizens to sell or develop their property in the way that they would, they would choose. It impacts homeownership and the ability of our citizens to build wealth. The American dream is to own homes. It's the, the main way families in Hamilton County build wealth. Plan Hamilton limits growth. It'll cause housing costs to rise. It'll cause serious harm to an entire generation of our citizens. Plan Hamilton impacts housing costs. It will cause housing to be more expensive. It impacts housing availability. It will cause houses, fewer houses to be built. And importantly, it impacts property tax revenue. It will lead to slower property tax growth and lead to either higher taxes, reduced services, or both. Importantly, there have been no studies done throughout the course of this Plan Hamilton process on any of these items. You have amendments in front of you that will help reduce the plan's impact in these areas. Now, I want to be clear about our position. We are not in favor of Plan Hamilton. As an industry, we believe it will harm our county on a number of fronts. However, if a plan must be passed, the amendments in front of you will reduce the harm to the county. They represent a significant change in how land development can be done in this county, and are the result of significant compromise from the plan that, that we think will be best for the county. We speak about density. There's been a lot of talk about density. We saw slides before that talked about lot size, which is a, a, a different but related topic. The plan is clear. It reduces the density in the overwhelming majority of our county. Even under the proposed amendments, density is significantly reduced in the both, in both the A-one and the R-one zones. There's only a possibility of density above the, those lower limits, where new areas are sewed. The plan adds regulations which add costs. The way development done will look and feel different in Hamilton County under Plan Hamilton, and developments will look different. The plans as written require a significant number of additional features on new development. Each of these new regulations will add cost to our, to new homes. However, if a plan is to be adopted, we favor the amendments that will reduce the regulatory impact and reduce the impact to the cost of a new home. Plan Hamilton will add buffer zones, landscape requirements, perimeter screenings, setback requirements, sidewalk requirements. It will reduce the amount of development in floodplains, and, and a number of other regulatory items that will impact development. Again, we are not in favor of, of, of regulation changes being in the plan. But if a plan must be adopted, we favor the amend, the proposed amendments. The plan amendment process, the plan contains provisions allowing amendments only two times per year. That adds an incredible amount of time and cost to new development. It's unnecessary. We strongly prefer a monthly cadence for changes, but we would support the every-other-month cadence that's in the proposed amendments. It adds cost, it adds time, but it's far better than what's in the, the plans that's currently drafted. In sum, we believe that Plan Hamilton, if adopted, will diminish the private property rights of landowners, will increase housing costs, will reduce homeownership rates, will result in people that work in Hamilton County simply buying homes in other counties where costs are lower. We will get all the traffic and all the use of our facilities and none of the tax revenue. It'll result in more land being used for development, sprawl, something we used to be, talk about, that we weren't in favor of. It'll result in additional pressures on the housing costs and availability in the municipal areas and the districts containing Hamilton County cities. If a plan is be, to be adopted, we favor a plan with the proposed amendments. Not our preference, but a far better resolution than the original. Thank you.
Got any questions? You know, I do have some lights. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, Mr. Bell, I've got a question for you. Could you give this to him, please? So, again, I'm, I'll reserve most of my questions for the end, but I had given, sent this to you probably six weeks, two months ago. I asked if this was accurate, where it shows the density of Rutherford at point two homes per acre, Knox at one per acre, Montgomery at point seven per acre, Wilson at point five, these are all counties, point five per acre, Williamson at point two per acre, Sumner at point five per acre, Davidson at point two per acre, Murray at point five per acre, and Loudon at point two per acre, and Hamilton County at two point zero per acre. Is this, is this accurate?
So, I looked at these counties, and most of them, if not all of them, have way more residential zones than what we have. So, they have many more opportunities for variety in housing than we currently have. There are zones in each one of these counties that have the, the homes-per-acre requirement that's on this list. Whether they're equivalent to, to, to our agricultural zones, I couldn't tell. But I can tell you this, that the zoning codes of all these counties are vastly different than what the zoning code is in Hamilton County.
So, can you send me the equivalence between now and, or in meeting next week, preferably by Friday?
I don't, what do you mean by equivalence?
Well, if we're two per acre, and these others are, these other numbers that you've got in front of you, could you send me what the equivalent is?
I'm telling you, you're comparing apples to oranges. There, there are zones within these zoning codes for these counties that have these densities, and they are labeled agricultural. There are far more zones in most of these. I can send you the zoning codes.
If you could just explain the differences between now and then, if you would, that'd be helpful. Can you do that?
Well, I think I explain the differences right now, that you're comparing apples with oranges.
Well, I, I get that analogy. That's kind of thirty thousand foot. Can you take it down to ground, ground level for me?
Yeah, I'll see what I can do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Bell, when I listen to you, you seem to imply that if Plan Hamilton is adopted, the, the homes are going to be built in neighboring communities. We'll get the traffic, we'll get the problems, but the other counties will get the revenue. Is that correct?
Yes, if you look at, this is RPA data, all of the surrounding counties, Tennessee counties as well as Georgia, almost without exception, their housing costs are significantly less than, than Hamilton County. Also, according to the RPA, and this was during the Plan Hamilton presentation process, they said that there were ninety-one thousand people that were driving into Hamilton County on a daily basis from other counties where they live to work in Hamilton County. So, I think it's clear that if our housing prices continue to rise, which they are rising, they are still rising, it will do nothing but drive people to other counties, when they still will work in our county, and we will get the traffic, and very little of the tax revenue.
And I think it was implied by you that the law of supply and demand is in effect, that if we limit home building, the, the cost of these houses will continue to be beyond the, the ability of especially younger families to afford.
Absolutely, absolutely. Housing is no different than, than any other industry. It's subject to the laws of housing, of, of supply and demand. If we can build more houses, the prices will come down.
A couple of more things, Mr. Bill. You know, I think you have a, you've, and maybe you haven't asked the commissioners, but the way you all look at it, if a community is not, first of all, government is funded by property taxes. And so, if a community is not building, will that same community be forced to tax people?
I don't know as much about funding the county as, as you do. I don't have the information that you do. But I did go through the county budget, and I asked questions. And there is very little sales tax revenue that comes to the county. The county is largely funded, overwhelmingly funded with property tax revenue, and there is overwhelmingly more residential property within the unincorporated areas than there is commercial growth. So, if we limit residential property tax growth, we, we slow the, the growth rate, then there's no other option other than to cut services or to increase taxes. I, I just, that's, that's my view of it. I just don't see how, any other way.
And, and then finally, I heard you express that concept of property rights and property ownership, that if a person owned property, government shouldn't be able to tell them what they can, if they're abiding by the law. Government shouldn't be able to come and tell them what they can do with their property. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, I, I, I can't say that the home builders as a group are, are in favor of unlimited rights to do what you want to with your property. We recognize there is zoning. We recognize government has a need to regulate to some extent property use. But what's happening, in our view, with Plan Hamilton, by restricting the way in which you can develop your property, there are a lot of people, I have a list in my office of everybody that owns A-one property of one acre or more, and I haven't done anything with it. But I wanted to send them a letter, and, and still may, saying, you, if you ever want to sell your property to developer, if you plan on, this is your nest egg, you need to pay attention, because Plan Hamilton is going to change what you think you can do with your property. And to that extent, we think that that should be something homeowners would, or landowners would opt in on.
Don't sit. But a couple of weeks ago, I asked Ms. Rennick to, to canvass people who were, to canvass people, and ask them what they want government to tell them what they can do with their property. And I'm looking at her back there, and I'm trying to get a reading, if she was able to get that information regarding property owners and being willing and wanting government to tell people what they could do with their property. Yes, if you would. Stay there.
Name and address, please.
Karen Rennick, Regional Planning Agency, twelve fifty Market Street. So, Commissioner, I understood the question to be how the RPA was responding to growth and development or proposals for development?
No, what I was looking for is when you all met with the people, to ask those people point-blank, would they want government to come and tell them what they could do lawfully with their own property?
We do not have that as a specific question, and the, and the plans don't show that as a specific question. I did pass along the planning agencies, I guess, the rundown of how we approach development and staff recommendations, and did send that after the meeting. But that is not a specific question that we ask. And then, as a reminder, we do have zoning in place already in Hamilton County, and zoning is a land use regulation.
And when you look at zoning, you've heard statements made earlier today about the needs for roads and got that kind of thing. Where is that money going to come from?
I think that's what Plan Hamilton is really trying to address. It does identify the needs. I think the plan and the presentation we showed a couple of months ago shows a hundred and thirty million in needs. You know, the range was spoken up here today. But that is really what the plan is looking at for the next five years. What is that plan for development and growth in the unincorporated area, knowing that we do have constraints, including funding, and have those transportation needs?
So, the roads are crowded right now, and without additional revenue, i.e. building homes, everybody is stuck.
I'm a little bit like Mr. Bell, that I would defer to you better on funding opportunities. I know there's, Commissioner Highlander spoke to the, the Roads Committee, but you all, we would be seeking, and any guidance you have for us, we're happy to have that.
Well, I'm just going to tell you right up, and I don't tell anybody. I'm very much opposed to any property taxes, period. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rennick, Mr. Bell. Thank you.
Okay, see no more lights. I've got one question, question for clarity, because it's my curiosity kind of snuck up on me when you made a comment. You said that if we don't do Plan Hamilton, and we open it up to where we can build wherever we want to, that means the housing prices are going to come down? I think when you have, so, so you spoke about, about the number of houses available on the market. Eventually, when you have that, those prices go down. So, yes, absolutely. If we build too many houses, if we, if we build beyond- If we build too many houses, if we, if we build beyond what the market needs, those prices come down. I can tell you that as a fact, as a home builder, when I did it, you've got no choice. And so yes, when housing supply outstrips demand, prices drop. Costs don't drop, prices drop. If you're a homeowner, you can't sell your home, it sits on the market, what do you do? You drop the price.
I think we're starting to see that now, because we've got pretty good influx of homes on the market now, so. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Becker, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just have, uh, one more question. Um, I thought I wrote down the name of the professor at UTC.
Chris Akoff?
Yep, thank you. Um, that, uh, cost of, of building, uh, 72.6 million in general fund expenditures, um, excuse me, generates nearly 53.7 million, and a cost of 72.6 million, a gap of 19 million in the cost of services provided to unincorporated, so there's a gap there. And you explained that the other day, you want to repeat that response?
Yeah, the way I read the report, it was very clear that, that new housing, uh, was a net positive impact from a, from a tax versus, um, revenue standpoint, or a tax versus infrastructure. It did pay for itself, slightly more than paid for itself. Uh, in, in fact, it was the only, uh, type of residential housing that did pay for itself. What I think you're referring to is that there is an overall deficit in the way the county funds itself, in that, uh, there are items that you can't fund, deferred maintenance and those things. But I don't think that applies just to new homes, um, uh, that's the, the overall residential market. But new homes, uh, paid for the services, the study was looking at the services that the county provides to new housing and new housing developers, and it concluded that, uh, there was a net positive impact. It wasn't huge, but that it did pay for itself.
Yeah, it, I, and when you mentioned that, I did look at the report again, and it does have a net positive on the county's general fund, but it doesn't include sewers, roads, schools, safety, and all the other associated expenses.
Uh, when a new subdivision is built, when a new subdivision is built, it pays for every bit of the sewers, uh, that, that it, uh, within that subdivision, and what is required to hook it to the lines. I mean, you can, you can, with all due respect, Commissioner, you can come up with a whole category of things that we can't pay for right now, that new housing doesn't pay for, uh, because we're, there's nobody, we're not doing them.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with you, that the expense of sewers, and roads, and schools is on the back of the county. And we have, as Commissioner Mackey likes to say, kick that can down the road. So it goes back to a meeting we had about three months ago, I wish we were working more closely together, because to get, that's the one thing that we do well here, but we're not right now, and we've got to come to some kind of agreement, and to have it one side or the other is just not, we, we've got to do what's best for Hamilton Countyans for the future. It's not, none of us are going to be here. It's going to be our kids and our grandkids that'll be here, and we got to make sure we leave the county in better shape than when we found it. Thank you.
Commissioner Shipley?
I've said this several times in here, and I see some mighty fine real estate agents over here that I've knew for a long time. The house prices are not going to go down now. We're all smart enough that if you have been in this business any period of time, or knowledge of construction, price goes up, price never comes down. All realtors work on comps, and the biggest thing is to keep the comps up on this, so it don't hurt the comps over here. Now, when you talk about a drop in price, normally that drop $5,000, unless somebody built a bad product, they need rid of it, 10, maybe 15. But overall, for people watching this meeting today, we don't want to leave these people the ideal, that if this commission takes away the amount of houses that can be built, that we're going to cost them maybe to be able to buy a home, because I don't see the price of houses dropping if you build four per acre, or one per acre. I don't.
Okay, Commissioner Mackey, do you have something to add?
Quick, you know, every year, we are graduating 5,000 of our children. With home prices continuing to be where they are, are these same kids going to live at our, stay in our homes, or will they be able to go out on their own, and buy a pri, buy a house? I don't see it. 5,000 kids a year, where are they going to live? What can they afford? Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Graham?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, actually, Commissioner Mackey kind of stole my thunder there on that. I don't know, you know, for years, we all tried to get industry of different types, so we had diverse industry in, in town to come to Hammond County. Now we're in the process, we're getting different industries that want to come to Chattanooga and Hamilton County, they want to come here, but then we're asking them to come here, build their business, but you can't live here, because we don't have enough houses for you. And Commissioner Mackey's right, we graduate 5,000 kids a year, and even Commissioner Baker said it, you know, these kids, it's going to be their, their future. Well, we're graduating 5,000 kids a year, even if you paired them up, like they were a married couple or whatever, but just assuming that, so even if you paired them up, they're still 2,500 homes a year. Where are they going to live? If we slow or stop growth, I'm call, I'm talking about, several commissioners are talking about district by district. What this does countywide, and Mr. Bell was right, it's about supply and demand. What this does countywide, if we slow down the growth, the ripple effect from that, because we've worked so hard to bring growth here, we've worked so hard to get new industry here, we've worked so hard to bring diversity in business, so our kids could stay here when they graduate. For years, our kids were going off other places, and now we get our kids home, and now we're telling them they can't live here. So what this does, at least for District 11, and I'm sure it's, I'm not speaking for anybody else's district, but what this does is if we slow down, the demand is still going to be there, we're still graduating 5,000 kids a year, but those kids are going to need a place to rent, or those kids are going to need a place to live. And in my district, it's already astronomical, even in the, the lower income parts of the, the neighborhood, it's astronomical for the rent. And all this does is put an extra burden on our young people by driving those rents up, and driving the cost of the smaller houses, the starter homes, workforce development homes, it drives the cost of those prices up if we slow down the growth. Also, we slow down the growth, there's not going to be as many businesses wanting to come here, because they're going to say, well, I can put my business there, but we can't have our workers there. That doesn't make sense. I mean, we've already lost an opportunity with a, a pharmaceutical company and 1,000 jobs. So we can't keep going down this road of losing the growth. The other thing is, supply and demand is a, is a, is a thing, it's a, it's an everyday thing. When you're, Mr. Bell said it right, if you put your house on the market and it doesn't sell, what's the first thing you do? You drop it. You drop the price, you drop the price. If there's enough houses on the market, it drops everybody's prices. And it also drops the price of rent, because, and if I'm not mistaken, the city council just said that there's more renters in our county than there's ever been before, by capita. So we do need to find a balance, we do need to find a balance. We, we don't want to sprawl, but one of our state legislators in the audience, as far as infrastructure and growth, we've identified another means of revenue that we're trying to work with our state legislators. When a house sells, the revenue from that sale, the, of the charges of the taxes, all of it 100% goes to the state. We've asked the state to let us, and all the other 94 counties have done the same thing, they've asked that they keep half of that transfer tax, the transfer, property transfer tax. That would give us a very big boost for infrastructure. And it's also on what? The sale of houses. It's on the housing industry. So there's a lot of, a lot of yings and yangs in this, that's why I want to diligently listen to both sides, but I hope somebody can bring us something new, because we keep hearing the same argument, and we haven't heard anything new. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Baker, do you have something?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, again, I, I hate that we're kind of pitting one against the other, but I mean, that's why I want to know how we compare to other counties, progressive, that are growing faster than us, that have better, um, housing numbers with less density. Just a point of clarification, 45,000 students, 12 grades, that's 3,750 students per year, just the, the math. Uh, it's assuming the ones in kindergarten graduate, hopefully they do. Um, so Mr. Graham, I, you were talking about the industry, what's the top, can you name the top 10 industries that have been added in the last four years here? I'm talking about public.
Hang on a second.
No, they don't, because we're talking about public schools.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, first of all, what, what the audience I don't think heard is private school figures into that, and it does figure into that. We want to keep our kids that are in private school, we want to keep them home too.
Okay.
You know, as a mom and, as a mom and dad.
I will grant you all that. Okay, moving on to top 10.
As a mom and dad, you know, I want to keep my children home, I want to keep my grandchildren home. I, I enjoy being with them, that's why we had them.
You made your point, top 10 industries.
The top 10 industries, I'll do my homework and come back to you on that.
Okay, deal, thank you.
Okay, no more lights. Um, we'll move forward to those that oppose. So we have 10 minutes, need, there's a, quite a extensive line there, so I ask you to be cognizant of those behind you, uh, because if we do 10 minutes, that's about, that's less than a minute apiece from those that are lined up. So, uh, time will begin with your name and address.
I'm Gary Bowles, 5812 Mountain Pass Drive in Utawa, I'll try to be brief. Commissioners, we live in a geographically and geologically complex county, mountains on the west and the east, and the river bisecting the county. A county where Chattanooga receives lots of tax benefits, but less than half of the people in Hamilton County live in Chattanooga. County taxes primarily go to schools for all the county. We need a better way forward. We've kicked the can down the road for years, waiting for the infrastructure to catch up with the development, like waiting for a tree to grow, because we lack the vision and a plan which encompasses the engineering, the politics, the funding, and the execution resources to fix the problem. The infrastructure problems won't fix themselves, and the well-intentioned projects underway right now are a Band-Aid at best. A better way forward is to listen to the citizens, direct growth in areas that can really support it and want it, and keep the rural character of the unincorporated areas at least, until there, there's a way to get a better funding stream than property taxes. Ours is a five-year plan. This resolution suggests we basically keep doing what we've been doing with the some concessions that are merely optics. That's the definition of insanity. Let's break the cycle and listen to the citizens. Thank you for your attention.
Kim Halt, 8618 Stone Hill Road. We've been listening this morning and hearing high density leads to affordable housing, lower cost housing, but we found this blanket statement is not correct in Districts 9 and 10. You have two packets that I handed out, and where thousands of homes have been built in District 9 and 10, looking at new construction homes. Many examples were found on a list of 10 of those was compiled that compares two per acre homes with similar homes in square footage to higher density per acre homes. A few examples are, comparison 2 is a two per acre home with 28 more square feet, .65 more acres of land, and is $15,000 less than a three per acre similar home. Comparison 6 is a two per acre home with 50 more square feet, .29 more acres, and costs $59,901 less than a three per acre home. Comparison 7 is a two per acre home with 107 more square feet, .71 more acres, and costs $5,000 less than a home in a five per acre zone. It's the type of homes that are built that determines the cost, not necessarily the density, and the majority of what is being built is what reaps the highest profits. A recent article claimed, and we heard today, that building higher profit homes would lead to lower starter home prices. This is called the housing ladder or filtering effect, and it takes decades to work if it works at all. In hot markets, starter homes don't get cheaper. In Districts 9 and 10, where we have had an explosion of higher profit homes built in the last 20 years, starter home prices have not lowered, they have increased. A starter home by some definitions is less than 1,800 square feet, we looked at homes less than 1,400 square feet or less on a half acre of land, both older and new construction. A few examples from the list you have, a 1,248 square foot single home built in 1995 on 3, .37 acres is $334,900. A 1,265 square foot home built in 2017 on .14 acres is $403,000. A 1,364 square foot town home on .08 acres, built in 2025 is $314,900. These don't seem like affordable costs for a starter home. Over 11,000 homes have been built in Districts 9 and 10 over the last 20 years, and over 4,300 in the last five years, but it's not generated enough money to pay for the infrastructure, uh, necessary infrastructure improvements. What it has led to is a loss in quality of life for residents, loss of natural resources and wildlife habitat, residents with flooding issues, especially when developments are allowed to be on the floodplain, and a decrease in safety, including long emergency response times. Denying this resolution will not stop growth. We do not need more high-density developments in rural areas until we have necessary infrastructure in, in place. And as we've seen last night, uh, the stormwater is a real problem in this county. Thank you.
Okay, next, name and address, time will begin.
Kimberly Evans, 4219 W. Road. Couple of you know me up there. I just found out about this last night, so I'm really not prepared, but I wanted to let you know, you have to think about the infrastructure for the two side roads on the, the W. and, and the one next to it, because if you, yeah, there's a lot of unincorporated land up on the mountain, and that would affect us up there. And so you have thou, you will have literally hundreds of more cars coming up and down both of those roads every single day, and the, as well Chip knows, the infrastructure of the W. Road and the other side road is not that great. And when we have mudslides like we had, that cost us $750,000 to fix, there's no money left to fix the roads itself. And there are things that need to be done to the W. Road and to the other W. to bring them up to where they should be in our standards. And if you have all these other homes up there, driving up and down the, the W. Road, and even the main road, which they're fixing all the time, you know, it's going to affect us up there, and it's going to affect all those cars. So I just wanted to make you aware that it's not just going to affect down here, it's going to affect us up on the mountain as well, and all those cars, because they literally back up all the way to my house every single day at 5:00, coming up and down the actual W. Road. And if you have hundreds of cars more coming up and down there, what is that going to do it, to it? You see what I'm saying? Huh? Well, it is, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Faulkner, I live at 5721 Island View Drive, Harrison, Tennessee. I'm here representing not just myself and the people in the room, but there are thousands of people who could not attend today, because they're at work, or they're with their children. So we're here to be their voice from our community. You all have heard all the old stuff, so I won't repeat that, but what I can say, I can tell you, kids today make choices. I made a choice, you made a choice. I have a son that bought his first home at 27, not because we're rich, not because we gave him the money. He worked, he saved, he helped put himself through college, he got a degree, and he worked some more. He's on his second home now, so it is doable, it can be done. Are they cheap? No, wasn't cheap when I bought my first house, wasn't cheap when you bought your first, it was a choice you made. I'd like to say something, and I want you all to think about it. A politician thinks about the next election, a statesman thinks about the next generation. You all are elected to represent all of us. Put your personal thoughts aside and represent the people. Thank you.
Next, time will start with your name and address.
Jennifer Duval, Colterville Road. Uh, 92% of the county taxpaying and voting citizens are not in favor of this resolution, or Plan Hamilton as it currently is presented. or Plan Hamilton as it currently is presented. Home Builders Amendments will allow cherry-picking every other month with no community input or anything that we can say in our neighborhoods. We are worse off than we started, gentlemen. Let's not fool ourselves. Do you want overdevelopment and congestion to be your legacy? Or do you want Hamilton County to be a quality place to live? Two thousand acres a day of agriculture land are paved over, fragmented, or converted to uses that jeopardize farming. This state economy's number-one muddy bringing in is farming and agriculture. Thank you.
Greg Lewis, fifty-five, fifty-five Hunter Road. I just wanted to bring up, so as an engineer, man, when I'm making decisions, I like to have all the data I can get. What, no matter which side of this debate you're on, we need, we need the best information so that you guys can make the best decision. And I've read through that cost of services report, and, you know, I think I understand the basics of it, but I'm not the expert. The good news is, we have experts. So, this is just a suggestion, if I'm allowed to make a suggestion. You know, have the folks that really understand that report come in and talk to you guys about what it includes, what it doesn't include, all those kinds of things. Because I think we're talking about tax, if you build more, you increase tax revenue, and that's true. But you also have the additional cost of services. So, if you're drawing, if you're making a hundred dollars worth of tax revenue and you're having to pay ninety-five dollars for that in services, you've only got five dollars left to go do something else with it. So, you know, if five dollars a house, it's going to take a while to build a new school or build a new road or anything like that. So, I just, I just encourage you, let's, let's get somebody that really understands all that to, to give you guys a briefing on what we're really talking about. Because if you bring a thousand new homes in here, if that study was a thousand, over a thousand and forty-two new homes, you know, the amount of money that was left over by the time they paid for all the additional services wasn't a lot of money. So, I'm just saying, let's get you guys the best data we can and make these decisions. Thanks.
Okay. We've got five seconds left. All right. All right. So, see no lights. See no lights. With that, rebuttal, five minutes. Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Julian Bell, three-two-two-one, Harrison Pike, Chattanooga, Tennessee. There's a lot that, lot that we agree on, it won't be in the form of rebuttal. Let me speak to a couple of things. And I think it was in Gary's slide. He said the home builders were opposed to conservation subdivisions. That's, that's not true. At one time, conservation subdivisions as a concept were in the plan. I don't know if they're in there now. There were no details on it. As a concept, we'd be more than happy to participate in developing some conservation subdivision regulations. Those are, those are a good idea. I do have a question. I know I'm not supposed to direct questions, but I'm a little unclear if the plan we're looking at is by district or by areas now. What we've always seen is areas. And I've heard a lot of talk about changing that to district. If that's the case, we would like to know that.
Have you looked at the resolution?
I did look at the resolution, yeah.
Okay, the resolution defines what it is.
Okay.
I've asked for it to be done by district.
Okay.
Because, again, I represent people who voted for me.
Okay.
I think the resolution says it's for the county.
Okay. Last time I saw the resolution, it may have been a different form, but that's, that's fine, as long as we understand.
Should be on the agenda, so, I mean, it's, it's, what we're voting on is what's on the agenda, so.
Okay. Infrastructure needs. We all agree there are serious infrastructure needs in a number of, of different critical, critical items, for lack of a better word, schools, roads, sewers. The real estate and home-building community wants to be part of a discussion as to how we tackle that. It's really important. It cannot only be on the back of new development. I can tell you that that would be what we would, that we would say, that it is a shared responsibility. This didn't come about overnight, and the newest entrance to our county, our new homebuyers, you can't expect them to shoulder it. But we would love to be part of the discussion because there's a lot of agreement. I sat down with many of the citizens here on Monday, and that was a topic of conversation. So, we would be more than happy to be part of that discussion.
Thank you, sir. See no lights. Do the rebuttal. Five minutes, and it begins with your name and address.
My name is Brian Glasscock. Live at fifteen thirty-one Laurel Breeze Drive. And you guys may remember, I've been a builder developer for forty-seven years. Mr. Hilton, I've really enjoyed, may I address Mr. Hilton just for a second?
You gotta, you gotta address the commission.
Okay, I have enjoyed meeting Mr. Hilton and getting to know him.
Did that answer your point of order? Okay.
I hate to bring this up, but it's, I think we need to clear the air with this, this subject. There's a lot of people who are wondering about this. Our opinion is, Mr. Hilton's resolution is going to be perceived as another government official benefiting the Home Builders Association. This resolution just adds fuel to a already smoldering fire. There may be a conflict of interest pertaining to this resolution. Commissioner Hilton is a builder. The Chattanooga Times article in twenty-twenty-two states that he was a member of the Home Builders Association. Mr. Hilton stands to benefit from these amendments just like any other.
Can we do something?
I'm sorry.
Let's, let's, let's stop the timer real quick. Let's make sure, address the commission as a whole. So, if you want to say a commissioner, or you can say the sponsor of, but don't, don't bring up.
Okay, the sponsor of this bill. I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I'm not trying to, I'm not familiar with your protocol because I don't do this very often. The sponsor of this bill was a member of the Builders Association. The sponsor of this bill stands to benefit from these amendments just like any other builder in Hamilton County. Public officials have a duty to act with undivided loyalty in the best interest of their county. Mr. Hilton's resolution, I'm sorry, the, this resolution appears to be in the interest of the home builders, not the people of Hamilton County. And again, I'm very sorry if I didn't present that properly, Mr. Hilton. A rationale for bringing up this conflict of potential conflict of interest is found in Tennessee Code, Section eight, seventeen, one-on-one. It states, "It is the intent of the General Assembly that the integrity of the process of local government be secured and protected from abuse." The General Assembly recognizes that holding public office and public employment is a public trust, and that citizens of Tennessee are entitled to an ethical, accountable, incorruptible government. If the presenter of this resolution votes on the resolution that potentially benefits the home builders when he himself is, when the presenter himself is a home builder, is the integrity of the process of local government secure and protected from abuse? In our opinion, it is not. Even if a, this is, even if it's not a clear legal violation, a situation where a commissioner's resolution could benefit their own business raises ethical concerns and can erode public trust in government officials. Public officials are expected to be impartial and avoid situations that create a conflict of interest. Based on these considerations, we respectfully request that Mr. Hilton would recuse that the presenter.
Let's do this. Let's, we will stop the clock, please.
Okay.
Here's what we need to make sure.
Okay.
Anytime anybody from the Citizens Group or any group does any type of presentation or does any type of comments towards the commission, you're addressing the commission as a whole. Now, if you want to refer to a resolution number, refer to a resolution number.
Okay.
But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be brought singled out to a particular individual in any form or fashion. And that is the rules that's been in place way before I got here, so.
Again, I apologize.
Refer to Resolution eight-twenty-five-dash-eighteen without it referring to individuals. Okay?
Okay. Based on the previous considerations, we would ask that the presenter of eight-twenty-five-eighteen recuse from voting on.
Okay. We're, again, I understand. Let's just make sure.
Okay, I'm done.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We got one minute and ten seconds left.
Tommy Farmer, seventy-nine, three-five Mill Creek Road. Thank you. And it's exactly what Brian Glasscock is saying right there. We are citizens. We're not special interests. We're not lobbyists. We're not up here representing anybody other than the people. The people have spoken. We've had surveys. We've had presentations. We've had peer. We've reviewed what other counties are doing. We've tried to bring forth all the information that we can bring forth. We don't do this. We are amateurs. We have full-time jobs. We go at our jobs each and every day. We have to take out of our business day to come and do these things, and we're trying to do this. We're trying to catch up as fast as it can. Mr. Bell said, we, in a meeting, it was just referenced that we, we didn't want to negotiate. I asked point-blank, "Do you wish to negotiate?" And he says, "Are you going to change and work on this resolution?" To somebody that represents this interest, and they said, "No. We have no interest in changing any options whatsoever." We talk about this infrastructure. We have to talk about the infrastructure. We didn't bring up wastewater. We saw the flooding last night. Many of your districts are exactly affected by last night. Guys, it wasn't just because we had six, seven inches worth of rain. It was because we were eroding our, our agriculture. We're eroding our forests. We're eroding our farmers. And we have no failing infrastructure to fix it.
All right.
It can't handle it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Commissioner Hilton.
Thank you, Chairman. First off, I want to say, when I became a commissioner, I let my membership in the Home Builders Association expire. I have not renewed it. Secondly, since I've been a commissioner, I have not pulled a permit in the unincorporated county. I've built a few houses in the city. I've built them in North Georgia. I think what we're voting on here is the unincorporated county. I build two to four houses a year. That's it. Mostly customs and a couple of workforce houses that, you know, I might have a lot here and there squirreled away. But I don't see where there's a conflict of interest. We're not voting on city stuff. We're not voting on Catoosa County. We're not voting on Walker County. We're voting on Hamilton County. So, I'm not going to recuse myself. Secondly, could y'all get up the chart? Thank you. I've heard over and over that we're worse off than we started if this is passed, that this resolution is going to add density. Those are patently false. We're going to put up a slide I put together that goes through the major points. Whenever it's up. Thank you. So, this is what, this is the meat of my proposal. And you can argue, and you can twist figures however you like. But currently, we're at two-per-acre in A-one. I have proposed one-point-five. In R-one, we're at seven. I have proposed five. Rezoning currently is every month. I have proposed every other month. We're going to move it from one side of the river to the other. Currently, you can fill one-hundred percent floodplains. With this resolution, it would be seventy-five. Road expansion, we do not make provisions for future infrastructure. We build the houses right up on the roads. With this resolution, we're going to have larger setbacks that provide, so we don't have to go through all the imminent domain and the headache to widen the roads when it is time to put in infrastructure. Houses are going to be set back further than they are now. It's in the resolution. The buffers, we don't require landscape buffers, but we're going to start requiring them on major thoroughfares. And I think the sticking point has been the three-per-acre and two-point-seven-five-per-acre in countryside residential. Currently, in A-one, when they run a sewer line, we go full-blown R-one and jam as many as we can on that parcel. What this provides is a middle ground between a full R-one and A-one development. If the sewer's there, it still has to go through this board. It still has to be voted upon. It just comes out of Planning Commission with a, a motion to approve, whereas an R-one, a full-blown R-one, would be to deny. I appreciate that everyone is upset on both sides of this issue. But to say this proposal does not lower density is an outright falsehood. And, I mean, this is where we're at. This is what's coming. Whether I have the votes for it or not, we'll find out. But it lowers density, increases setbacks, makes provisions to not fill flood, floodplains. In every metric, it creates a better situation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, I guess Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner Hilton, that was beautifully said. And not only said, but up on the screen for everybody to see. That was, that's very good. We asked, matter of fact, I think I, I, I asked to put the last two resolutions on the table. And then we found out that that process had to go through the Planning Commission and to the state, and then back to us. But at the same time, we had two resolutions before us, an amended version, that was a lot bigger than this, and the original version. And we tabled both because most of us didn't feel comfortable with either plan. And at that meeting, we asked that they take the issues from both resolutions, merge them together, and come back with one. And as Commissioner Hilton just said, this doesn't make either side feel good. But I believe this is a happy medium. Well, it may not be happy, but, but this is a way to compromise. And right now, we have one side that doesn't want to compromise and the other one is being forced to compromise. And this right here, this plan, and I appreciate you, Commissioner Hilton, for trying to find middle ground. This shows that compromise. But if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, can I ask the attorney a question about this?
Sure.
So, County Attorney, this resolution today, if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong, in as depth as you want to go, this resolution is just giving guidance to the Planning Commission. They still have to come up with their own plan, send it to Nashville, bring it back, and then send it to us. So, please clarify that.
That's correct. So, the wording of this resolution as opposed to the others is this is merely giving guidance, whereas the other resolutions that were tabled actually had the word "adopt Plan Hamilton", and that's what made it in violation of state law.
So, the Planning Commission is here, or RPA's here. Do you understand this on the resolution? Do you understand that this is for guidance? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
So, you're asking the RPA to come up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Yes, we understand the Planning Commission is the one that needs to adopt a regional plan under state law. We do have an older comprehensive plan. This would replace that plan. County Commission may adopt Plan Hamilton, and we do understand the state law needs to be in line. I think I understand and read this to read that the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Planning Agency are hereby advised it is the will of Hamilton County Commission to change Plan Hamilton in accordance with the following changes. That would be the direction that we would be presenting to Planning Commission. So, we would understand Planning Commission would be acting on these proposed changes. we would understand Planning Commission would be acting on these proposed changes, um, that the understanding that's the will of the commission, if it gets approved, and that would be what we are presenting to Plan, to Planning Commission.
So, if it, whether it passes next Wednesday or fails next Wednesday, you are still charged to come up with a plan that you have to get approval from Nashville and then still present to us?
Correct, as a reminder, we do have an existing adopted comprehensive plan that was developed in 2016, I think it was amended in 2018, 2019, and again in 2021, so we are, we do feel compliant with the state law requirement to have the general adopted plan, um, but we also, and I believe, I think I spoke it, um, the last time we discussed the timing, is that we want to place the Plan Hamilton on Planning Commission agenda when it's ready. Talked about September 8th, and I believe I said at that time, based on the information we had provided at that time, and so, again, I would, um, defer to County Commission to let us, as Planning Agency, know that we are prepared to be moving forward to place that on the Planning Commission agenda. So we want to move timely, make sure we're doing our part, that that is in compliance with the wishes of the County Commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a question of clarity? So when, when you say this plan and the, and saying, hey, that we would support this, does that mean what we see on the screen, the current and proposed, that means that proposed would be in all the unincorporated areas, whether it be East Brainerd Road, or Snow Hill Road, or Signal Mountain, that, that same criteria would be in every single area of unincorporated? I'm just, just clarity for me.
Mr. Chair, and, um, referencing the resolution, it says, and it's the first bullet, in all appropriate areas of all plans, so my, um, that would be a yes, my understanding, it is referencing, it says, um, of all plans.
So there wouldn't be any, like Wolf Teever Plan would be obsolete, White Oak Mountain Plan would be obsolete? I'm, I'm just asking for clarity, so.
Um, so we do have adopt, we have the general plan, and we do have adopted plans, we do reference, that most of them are, have quite a bit of age, the Wolf Teever Plan, the former Area 12 Plan, Plan Hamilton, and the recommendations here would replace those prior, those would be sunset with the new recommendations here.
Okay, all right.
All right, Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. We have come here with clean hands, wanting to do the right thing with all the true information. And it seems as if someone has been disingenuous in terms of how they have presented their information. Worse than that, they've, uh, they've offended one of my fellow commissioners, and I want to apologize to you for them. Uh, you're just trying to do your job, and doing it in a fair and upright way, and it, it just bothers me that they, they're wanting to distort the truth, which is right there in front of them, and then kill the messenger, that's, that's not right, so. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I yield, thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, hey, Tommy, would you come back up? Where's Tommy? He's still here, oh, there you are, front row. Um, yeah, so, so three and a half years ago, I asked Mayor Coppins, if we could do, uh, allocate $30,000 for budget to update the Walden's Ridge Plan, and after even saying, "Well, RPA's supposed to do that", he finally granted my wish, we put it in the budget, we did all the right, the right way, we started the planning, and we had a plan that was probably 85, 90% completed when the new RPA director came in and asked to, um, take, put a pause on that, so that we could do this together, and as a team player, I agreed. I wish I hadn't, I wish I hadn't, because if, for some reason, we can't convince our colleagues up here about how important each of our districts is, right now, for this, I can't imagine anything in the future that we're gonna be able to agree on, because we usually reflect on the, that commissioner, that district, their needs. The big issue we've got, and, and again, I, I appreciate this chart, um, my colleague put up, um, but on that is also, if you go to a decentralized system, it's three units per acre, not one and a half. So, what really got me going was you, about a year and a half ago, with a little development called Spangler Farms, and I don't see the developer out here, and I hope I never do, because this guy pissed me off. And you were, you and I didn't know each other, in fact, I knew the other Tommy Farmer, and, um, but based on that development, with decentralized system, with the lakes on it, how many dwelling units could, per acre, could they put in that development?
Before, they were proposing, uh, 208, now, with this bill, they could put two, upwards 230, 240.
And how many per usable acre?
Up to five, oh, usable acres then?
Yeah.
Maybe, I'm sorry, um, maybe, maybe 30, 40 acres usable.
No, but I mean, how many dwelling units per usable acre, it's like, seven?
5.8 to 7.
Okay, so, so here we've got, you know, again, I appreciate the one and a half per acre, but the reality is, with decentralized system, we could have 5.8 to 7 per acre on top of rock, by the way, and, oh, one other thing that we don't consider, that I should be able to consider in my plan, I've got mines up there, I've got mines behind my house. I've got, where's Kurt? Put your hand up, where's Kurt? Is Kurt, Kurt here? There he is, over there, Kurt, I, I was over at his house, he's got a mine shaft behind his house, and he's, and then we're, we've got a development of like, I think there's 20 mines, that we don't consider when we're building, a mine, a mine. So, so the point is, each of us should have the ability to develop what we need on our plan, and, and to be able to put three per acre on a decentralized unit based on gross acreage, comes up with a gross number, that just doesn't make sense. So, I just wanted to thank you, I wanted to thank you for bringing it to my attention, as well as the others, Kurt, and, and Glasscocks, and everyone else, so, thanks for the clarification.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
The one thing that I would say is sharing that cost, and the infrastructure, the consent decree on wastewater, we went in the areas that were greatly affected when we created the WWTA, where areas primarily impacted were Red Bank, East Ridge, Signal Mountain, Soddy Daisy, those cities, and we took that $500 million estimated just to rehab those programs, that infrastructure, those wastewater areas, and those cities, we've spread that cost out to the entire county, to the unincorporated area, to my house, we all did it, and we did it, and we've continued to do it, this commission allocated almost $58 million last year toward those rehabilitation efforts for, for your cities, so we should take consideration in your district, and my district, and how it affects Commissioner Eversol's district, and Mr. Sharp's district, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shipley, did you have? Okay, all right. Okay, I see no more lights, we will take this up next week at our regular meeting. With that, we'll talk about committee, committee assignments, we have Finance Committee, Commissioner Smith, there's seven resolutions, we'll take immediately following this.
Yes, correct.
Uh, Economic and Development Committee, Commissioner. We will, when I, let me get these ready real quick. Commissioner Hilton, you've got two resolutions, and then, uh, see, Commissioner Highlander, you've got four resolutions that we'll take up, so let's, let's take a brief, three-minute break.
Okay. If we have the commissioners come back to your podium, to your seat, we'll do a roll call and get back. Okay. We're back in order, back in session. We finished the committee assignment, so we'll do a quick roll call to make sure everybody's accounted for.
They gotta be up there.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Beck, absent, Commissioner Chauncey, absent, Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Hilton. Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey. Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Mr. Shipley. Commissioner Smith. Chairman Eversol.
Here. Back on our agenda, we're moving to announcements. Uh, we'll begin with Commissioner Shipley, announcements.
I'll just say that it was a sad night in Chattanooga, with the storms, and I thought everybody had escaped on, but we read, Dave, there was some loss of life, and hate that, wish these families well, and everybody get back on their feet, that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Uh, there probably is something, but I've said enough, thank you.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. Just like my fellow commissioner, um, uh, too, I'm saddened by the loss that we suffered here in Hamilton County, but, but it also begins to speak to that need for a wastewater treatment plant, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp.
I believe I'm gonna bite my tongue, Chairman, I have no announcements.
Okay, Commissioner Hilton.
Yeah, I wanted to reiterate prayers for the family in East Ridge, it's my hometown, it's not the district that I represent, um, it was a husband, wife, and a child, that's never an easy thing. Just unprecedented weather and unfortunate timing, and my prayers, I know all of y'alls as well, are with their family.
Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman, I too want to express my sincere regrets for the loss of life, and for those who've gone through property damage too, but especially the loss of life, and, and urge everyone in the county to put their prayers up, uh, for those that are suffering now, those who've lost life, and those that have other suffering too. I'm reminded, we just celebrated the ninth anniversary of the Woodmore debacle, and I just hope and pray we never have anything like that again, uh, my heart still goes out to those families, those children, I was chairman of the school board when that happened, and I was on the scene within 15 or 20 minutes of when it happened, and I will forever remember those children being carried out of those, of that bus, and so, please, things, I, I guess I was reminded of that, we had the, the ninth anniversary of it, and then I thought about the, uh, this flooding that happened, and how that could happen in a school bus, and I'm thankful that our superintendent was wise enough to call off school today, and we just finished the first week of school, and I thank our, every teacher that works with boots on the ground with the children every day, we need to do everything we can to support them, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Graham.
Uh, like my fellow colleagues, uh, thoughts and prayers to the people that were devastated by the storms, um, yesterday, and we've, we've also heard some horrible stories, and, and my wife actually lived in an area that was flooded all the time, and, and they finally had to tear her old house down and, and remove those houses from that area, so I'm very familiar with flooding, um, and just the thoughts and prayers for that, thank you.
Attorney Varnia.
No announcements.
My heart still goes out to those families, those children. I was chairman of the school board when that happened, and I was on the scene within fifteen or twenty minutes of when it happened. And I will forever remember those children being carried out of that bus. And so, please, things, I guess I was reminded of that. We had the ninth anniversary of it, and then I thought about the flooding that happened and how that could happen in a school bus, and I'm thankful that our superintendent was wise enough to call off school today. And we just finished the first week of school, and I thank every teacher that works with boots on the ground with the children every day. We need to do everything we can to support them. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Graham?
Like my fellow colleagues, thoughts and prayers for the people that were devastated by the storms yesterday, and we've also heard some horrible stories. And my wife actually lived in an area that was flooded all the time, and they finally had to tear her old house down and remove those houses from that area. So I'm very familiar with flooding. And just the thoughts and prayers for that. Thank you.
Attorney Varnell?
No announcements.
Okay. Mayor Womp, mayor's office. Okay. A couple of things from the chair. Number one, we have a celebrity amongst us. Mr. Kane? Welcome. UTC Hall of Fame, so welcome to the commission room. Second thing I want to talk about is, you know, yesterday was devastating in our county. I don't think anyone ever expects five, six, and seven inches of rain within a three-hour window. But I would hope that as a county, that we would take some key learnings and also maybe work with the state. Because I don't think during, with all the construction going on on I-24, it kind of gives us an opportunity to say, you know, is there adequate drainage and so forth in that area? And of course, I know there were some boundaries as far as when you're in construction, things aren't set like they're supposed to be. I think we understand that. But Nathan, I think it would be very important that as a county, if we would work with the state to make sure that we review that area and let's look at any precautionary measures. Because we had many, many motors stranded for many, many, many hours. So I would hope that we would study that really deep. So, yeah, if you want to address, Mr. Jamil.
Chairman, thankfully, we're already sort of in that process. We definitely will prioritize those areas that we saw significant flooding. But one of our state requirements through our Water Quality Department is to map our stormwater and our floodplains. And we're currently in the process of doing that. We've taken care of Hunter Road. That was our first priority, based off of some traffic issues as well. But we'll definitely highlight those areas that we saw significant flooding and make sure those are next on the list.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. With that said, we'll move into public comments. Anyone from the general public has any comments? Again, just keep in mind, you're addressing the commission as a whole. You'll have three minutes, and it begins with your name and address.
Andrew Jones, 607 Timber Ridge Drive. I just find it very ironic that the elected body in front of me were unable to call an individual out. I know it's a state law, but, I mean, if we're gonna sit up here and apologize for what's said at this podium, if we're gonna sit here and accuse people of using their First Amendment rights, not cursing, and things like that. I mean, it happened at the RPA meeting on Monday, or maybe the zoning meeting that happened where people were, "I don't like what was set up here." There was a commissioner who said two weeks ago, which, maybe he's here, maybe he's not, that didn't like what's coming from this podium, doesn't like being asked questions. I mean, here's the selection season, gentlemen. And here's the pro tip: transparency. Just because something hasn't been done before doesn't mean you can't change the rules and push for betterment of our local and state and federal government. Just because it doesn't involve this body directly doesn't mean it doesn't involve us, and if it involves us, it involves you. And this whole idea, which the city of Chattanooga is also saying, that increasing services, keeping services, and decreasing taxes is not viable, is insane. There's bloat throughout all of government. There is bloat, like, and they'll say with the budget that it's transparent and you can see that the police got $10 million. All right, well, how much did every single police officer put into their car? What time date stamp did that credit card swipe? We need transparency, down to the dollar. And so when it comes to Plan Hamilton, that's been planned apparently since 2016 with amendments, why isn't there a full day of conversation in bringing all of the stats to bear, not the ones that have the money to be made bringing the stats that matter? Other stats are being brought up here. There's people that are probably reading the old Plan Hamilton and coming up here confused about what's happening with new resolutions and everything else. Transparency, have the conversation. Don't go to your freaking day job and consider this your day job. You were elected for all of Hamilton County, not just where you're elected out of. You represent all of Hamilton County, not just your district. You vote on everything that happens in this county. It's common sense, and people are so fired up, and we're gonna say the same things, and we're gonna say the same things, and we're gonna say the same things until it changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, it begins with your name and address.
Glenda Petu. I live on Pierce Road in Birchwood. Article one of the Tennessee State Constitution, Section one, and I quote, "That all power is inherent in, inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded by, on their authority, and instituted for their peace and safety and happiness. For the advancement of those ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indefeasable right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner as they may think proper," unquote. That's the beginning of our constitution. That's our state constitution, and today's commission discussion is the very reason that statement is in the beginning. When we, the people, unite in defiance of how our elected officials are performing their duties in such a way that they are overreaching their authority, we must stand up for our right to stop such action and demand that such body listen to, and he, we, the people. I think that's what y'all are doing today, and appreciate that. Our county is divided into districts for a reason, just like Mr. Hollander said. Life is not the same in the rural areas as it is in the city. It's not a party issue. It's a life issue, and each of you would, should, and do, I hope, respect our way of life, just as we respect yours. In my opinion, there should never have been a county-wide growth plan. Each commissioner should be responsible for his district and responsible to work with those in his district to create their own plan. As long as the plan is within the boundary of the law, each commissioner should vote in favor of the individual district's plan, because that commissioner knows his district. No one commissioner should be given the authority to change the entire county. You took an oath to uphold our constitution and truly represent and serve the people in your district, the people in your district, not an organization. We do need home builders, but trying to please the Home Builders Association should not be a consideration. You answer to us individually. It's how this affects our lives, our families, our properties, not an organizational corporation. You're entrusted to serve the people, not to vote your conscience. Your position is not a blank check to do what you think is best. You have a duty to find out what our will is and act on it. Yesterday, we saw the flooding. Gumbel Road, East Ridge, Moore Road, Brainerd Road, they were all closed. People were trapped in their cars. It's obvious that our infrastructure needs help. I suggest you bring your district plans to your constituents and get input from them. Then create your individual district resolutions and present them to the commission. Please do not expect the public to accept a one-size-fits-all growth plan for all of Hamilton County. And I pray you'll take this to heart.
Thank you. Next. Your time will begin at three minutes, when you start with your name and address.
Sherry Stacy, East Ridge, Tennessee, Connel Street. I want you all to know foremost that each and every one of your names are in my prayer box. So whenever I wake up, whatever time that is, I'm retired now as a nurse. Everybody gets prayed for, and for my East Ridge people in government, and for United States. But what I want to bring to you is talking about this stormwater and this runoff and all this other stuff that goes along with all this building that everybody wants to do, and I'm not in favor of more asphalt and concrete, by no means. But also know that there's necessities at times. But what I want to bring up is this runoff. What we already have in place is not being taken care of, and it's not being upheld. The rains from yesterday were extreme for a little, not totally extreme, if anybody has been here since 1973, and we remember the water was up over the Kmart and up to Ringo Road, and houses were flooded. Water was over the roofs. And things have just not really changed much. We have got, where I'm living at now, which I raise my children in East Ridge, and by the way, they didn't want to stay in Chattanooga. Both of them are well-educated. My son's a doctor, my daughter in military combat, and also down in Neshetis and Marietta. Honey, they couldn't wait to get out of East Ridge and out of Chattanooga. And that's what I hear from a lot of their friends, and none of them didn't want to stay around. But this is the third time I've been flooded this year. So this rains that we got, that little six or six and seven inches, and also it was not in a short period of time. That rain started yesterday morning, and it didn't finish up until last night. So that wasn't no extreme little short burst of rain for three or four hours, as I keep on hearing from news agencies and some other people. But this is the third time. My neighbor has a working garage across the street from me, and if he did not have all his equipment up, it would have been ruined. That man has extremely expensive equipment. But behind his property is one of those drains, you know, all that runoff from Ringo Road, and the pavement was up. I drove up Ringo Road coming here. The pavement is lifted from the ground, rocks everywhere. And when they were doing East Ridge, "Oh, let's make East Ridge beautiful," well, dear heavens. I called, and I called, and I called, and I called about cleaning out some of those big drains. And the property that I'm at now has that great big old concrete, huge, you could walk through it, going right between our two houses. Well, behind that, there's not a concrete, John, I don't know what you call those things. But the water, it never gets cleaned out.
Ms. Stacy, I would appreciate your comments. What I would encourage you to do is
If you say East Ridge, it falls on the ears.
No, we need to get Commissioner Chauncey, who's not here with us today. We probably need to get him in, so if you'll get her contact information, let's get to Commissioner Chauncey.
But I'm saying, I'm not the only place. I have friends all throughout this whole county and other counties. So you talk about doing more and more. Please take care of what is already in place and keep it cleaned out. Because all those floodwaters couldn't go through that pipe because of the clogs. It's all limbs, stem. I mean, I picked up needles out of my yard this morning from the runoff. Needles. So that was coming down Ringo Road.
Thank you so much for your comment. I know I talked this morning, had a conversation with our highway department expert, and he's been on it since yesterday. We just got a lot of roads to cover real quick, but thank you for your time.
Quiet and calm and nothing going on, and I'll tell you what it is. So let's get back to money. We don't have the money. We don't have the money. We don't have the money.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you for listening to me.
You're welcome. Next, got three minutes. We begin with your name and address.
My name's Sabrina Daniel. I live at 4410 Maryland Drive. And some of this will be a review, but I'm a teacher type, and so I know people need to hear things a second time. I agree with this lady. I was out, had been to the city council meeting, and getting home, we ran into a police car that had blocked off Brainerd Road, which was horrendous. And then when I got over to Ringo Road, it was horrendous. So I have family off of Hunter. I'm glad you're doing that. But please don't forget Brainerd Road and Ringo Road. Good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time, energy, and effort in looking for a compromise plan in development and quality of life in our county. Having said that, I do support Plan Hamilton. I do feel like that it is a conflict of interest for people in the industry to be involved here, because they can benefit financially from decisions that are made. We want to look at the common good, not the industry, but what's the common good for folks. I have a sense of urgency. As I come to meetings, city, county, committee, my observation is it's very slow. My encouragement is simplify, simplify, simplify for the common good. In terms of houses, I had a house once that was on an acre, so I have a concept of that. I know every district is different, but I think three houses, 2,000 square feet per acre, is something that we need to look at. Again, this goes back to development. What kind of city do the citizens want this to be? Fabulous quality of life versus mindless development for more tax dollars? Is this a safe area to develop? Do we have the water sewer systems? Do we have the roads to accommodate the development, so the traffic doesn't look like Christmas on Gun Barrel 365 days a year? Do we have the schools to accommodate? What about beauty, quality of life in our city, or does this detract when we make this decision? How much tax money are we really bringing in? County Commissioner Friends, would you be willing to live next door to this development? Thank you for getting accurate data before making critical decisions which affect all of us, considering quality of life, becoming the city we want, and developing as we should. It does not have to be one or the other. Sincerely, Sabrina Grace Daniel, a concerned citizen.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. So next, three minutes will begin with your name and address.
Stephanie Butler, Runyon Hills Lane, Udoa. I attended the RPA meeting Monday, and I was so struck by the conversations about transitional housing for people aging out of foster care. And one of our commissioners spoke as a citizen, and one of them was on the board, and I appreciate that. And it was basically stereotyping and not in my backyard syndrome, and I know that y'all all need to know that we need to face this fact, and we need to provide this as a community, as a county. And I don't know, as a county commissioner, can you do that through zoning regulations, new developments? They have to consider placing a household that can be run like the lady wants to from Broken Heels. That was a fantastic organization, and we need to collaborate with them as a community, as a society here. Something that we all need to concentrate on. We just can't say, "Not in my backyard, let kick it down the road." So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, three minutes will begin with your name and address.
Steve Page, and I live at 9201 Carriage Lane. I'm off of Udoa, Ringo Road there, and as I ride my bike down the road and I look off to the buildings that they're building, the new homes, I could sit on my toilet and ask my neighbor for a roll of toilet paper. That's how close these things are. I mean, literally, that's ridiculous. They're almost like an apartment next to each other. They're that close. Think about that. Would you want to live that close to your neighbor? Infrastructure's a big thing. Y'all haven't done nothing about the roads. I've been here 20 years. Nothing's been done to any of the roads in 20 years. Oh, you paved a little bit here, paved a little bit there. I paved roads in Florida and got trophies for roads that we built. I could teach these guys how to put a road down, literally, but I'm retired. Anyway. Something needs to be done. A third lane needs to be put in on at least a two-lane road. You need a turn lane. You're not allowing traffic to keep flowing. I set at a traffic light sometimes through 10 lights before I can get through it, because there's so much traffic from all these homes that are already here. How many more homes are we gonna allow come into the area with just two-lane roads? You can't go nowhere. People are spending an hour when it used to take them 15 to 30 minutes to get home. Now they're spending an hour, if not longer, because they're sitting in so much traffic. Think about that. Maybe you don't have to worry about it, but I know a lot of us that actually work regular jobs have to worry about it. I don't technically right now, but I know other people, friends and that, that run into these situations. So just think about putting all these homes in. The other thing is, if you put homes on all this land that had trees and grass and that, well, where's all the water gonna go? It can't go into the ground anymore, because you got buildings blocking that. So it's running off into the streets, running off into